I call the April 6, 2021 regular meeting of council to order. Councilman Marn give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us and help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here. Good evening. As of the beginning of April, council, as well as municipal planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, are back to welcoming the public to their meetings. Council chambers has a reduced total occupancy of 41 with social distance seating. Masks are required for the audience and for those walking around the room. If you wish to speak about a particular item on the agenda, you will need to complete and submit the form available at the council chambers entrance tables to the clerk of council prior to the start of the meeting. You will be directed to the podium at the appropriate time. For the time being, we are still offering attendance via WebEx. If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q&amp;A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in this meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be permitted to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If you wish to comment on an item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments unrelated to the agenda items will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council portion of the agenda. For those who are attending remotely, please make your speaking request at this time and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the March 2, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. The minutes of the March 2, 2021 regular meeting have been approved. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome State Senator Jerry Sorino, who will offer a state legislative update. Last time he was here, he was a commissioner, and we welcome him back as one of the first physical members to of the community to visit us at council. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everybody. It's great to be back in Mentor Council. It's been a while, and I didn't realize this was your first in-person meeting in a while, so I'm happy to be a part of that. Mentor is the largest city in the 18th Senate District, and I can also boast that it's the only city where I can actually say that I know everybody on city council and consider all of you as friends, certainly. I thought it would be a good idea, I've been doing this around the district, meeting with city councils, some in person, some through the, through WebEx meetings, to just keep you posted on what's going on in Columbus. Not every activity down there is necessarily going to have an impact on any one particular city, but I thought you might be interested in a few of the things that we've been doing and that we've accomplished over the last, the first three months. We're on a little bit of a break right now and still have a very aggressive agenda set aside for between now and in June. But I wanted to review a couple of these things and perhaps answer any questions you might have about what the heck we're doing down there in Columbus. I know John's probably got a few questions. He asks me all the time. So first of all, one that is relevant was what I was the cosponsor on Senate Bill 44, which was ultimately merged with a House bill, and it related to House Bill 6, the famous or infamous House Bill 6 that we've all read so much and heard so much about. And you know, as you will recall, as commissioner, I was involved in trying to get that bill passed because it was going to protect the continued operation of the perinuclear plant along with Davis Bessie and protect the economy of Lake County and certainly the surrounding immediate communities. And we worked very hard to get that passed. Of course, we didn't know what was going on apparently in the background with all the allegations that still haven't come to fruition or been satisfied yet. But there was a big move to totally eliminate House Bill 6, just sort of to wipe their hands clean at the end of last year in the 133rd General Assembly. I was against them doing that because it was going to be a knee-jerk reaction to the allegations, even though it was actually good policy. It was good energy policy, I believe, in House Bill 6 to continue protecting the two plants that are producing 100% clean energy in the state of Ohio, in the vast majority, in excess of 90% of the clean energy. And also because it was important to protect the communities at both nuclear plants. And I think everyone here is certainly familiar with the numbers that we had talked about last year relative to what would be in jeopardy from a employment perspective and taxes. So that bill was merged with the, with the House bill, and because House Bill 6, the original one, emanated from the House originally, we allowed them to take my bill, Senate Bill 44, which eliminated the subsidy payments to the two nuclear plants, saving ratepayers over the next seven years a billion dollars, a very meaningful number. And the reason that we were able to do that was because circumstances changed in the energy world, and First Energy, or excuse me, not First Energy any longer, Energy Harbor, who now owns and operates the two nuclear plants, found a more inviting atmosphere in Washington right now to green energy production. And so they're going to be getting some assistance from the federal government. We tried to do that before, before we did House Bill 6, and we got no traction in Washington back two or three years ago. And so they do not need the subsidy in order to continue operating the plants, and we're comfortable with that, and that's why I proposed Senate Bill 44, which stripped out the billion-dollar payment, and that was passed and signed by the governor this past week. So we've kept the plants operating, we've saved ratepayers a billion dollars over seven years. I think those are two meaningful accomplishments. Other parts of House Bill 6 are going to be picked apart one by one, but we did not take a complete approach and just eliminate the whole bill. We felt that needed and deserved a lot more thought than that. Senate Bill 80, I'm also a cosponsor with Senator Gavirone, which is now still in hearings and will be discussed in a concurrent bill in the House, which does something that I quite frankly wanted to do for a very long time, and that is for Supreme Court races and for courts of appeals. We are, we are in this bill asking to have the political party designated on the ballot in the general election for those judicial races. I've always felt for a long time that people just, people are always calling me, probably you have the same experience, in asking which judges to vote for because they don't know who they are. Maybe not the local ones, but certainly for courts of appeals and Supreme Court, it's very difficult. Yet we have a partisan primary in order to produce those candidates, but in the general election, we don't designate their party. And so our bill calls for designating for those two races, the, the political party. We had hearings on it, we had some spirited hearings. We had former Supreme Court justices in Ohio testify against it, but we believe that our rationale makes, makes a lot of sense, and I believe that that bill will be successful when the House gets, gets, gets through with it. One I particularly want to talk about is, and that is, and I'll try to be brief here, is Senate Bill 135, which is my first solely introduced bill. It's a, I am vice chairman of the Higher Education and Workforce Committee in the Senate, and I have been working on for, even during the campaign last year, opportunities to reform how we do higher education and workforce development. I think everybody here pretty well knows that the companies in the surrounding areas, and it actually is the case throughout Ohio, cannot find qualified people to run their businesses, to expand, and it's very difficult to attract companies to come to Ohio when we have this workforce issue. Part of the problem, and it's a complex problem, is our educational system doesn't necessarily do everything it should do for that. And so this bill, which we will start hearings on in two weeks, is, is a big overall of how we're doing education in the state of Ohio, and I'm pleased to be the, the sponsor of that bill. It calls for a number of things, more focus on community colleges and education there, more focus on transparency with all of our educational systems, so the parents trying to decide where their children are going to go to school for higher education, so that they know everything about those schools that they should have access to very easily. We're even talking about, and I have a session, a section in there on protecting the First Amendment rights of students, of whatever their opinions happen to be, no opinion should be squelch in classrooms and in discussions, and we're going to be addressing that in the bill. The one thing I'd like you to walk away with on this bill is something that I'm calling the Second Chance Voucher Program. And what this addresses is that if, we have tens of thousands of students who start a career in a four-year institution and don't finish it, okay? If you subtract the top four universities in Ohio, these are public universities, if you subtract those out because they have much better graduation rates, everybody else is below 50%, and that's over a six-year period to graduate. That's not a good number. Those of us in business would never be satisfied with 50% of anything. And, and we don't know what happens to those students. They, they leave the university not having completed, probably with debt that they have assumed, or their parents have assumed the debt. And we want them to get into the workforce. We want them to be directed and counseled to another career. And so what we're planning on doing is, in this bill, the universities that they dropped out of will have a financial responsibility through a formula that we have, that we believe is very reasonable, to put money into a, into a trust fund that will be drawn upon over 10 years for the student to use, if they choose, to apply to a community college program, a certification program, you know, the, any, any training program that is recognized and certified by the state of Ohio, so that we can get them into the workforce. These could end up being CNC operators, it could end up being any number of jobs in manufacturing that require some level of training and certification. We believe that that is going to be a transformational voucher program. Obviously, we're getting pushback from the university presidents, and I'm dealing with that, but we're not going to back down. We believe this is an important thing for us to do. So be on the lookout for Senate Bill 135 as we start hearings, and we're going to have testimony from many businesses, some in Lake County, some in Mentor, that I've already talked with, that are friends of mine, that are going to help us try to push this, push this through. We, we also, I, I do want to mention just briefly, what was Senate Bill 22, which was ultimately ended up being the veto override of the governor's authorities to, to shut down businesses or to do health orders. And, you know, I've been a fan of the governor, I was a supporter of his in the race, and this is not about, you know, the governor at all. I think it's about giving the legislature a, a seat at the table on some very important issues. When I was commissioner last year during the COVID year, I, as many of you, spoke with a lot of businesses, right? They were calling us, asking us what we could do, you know, they didn't think it was fair, they were essential, they thought, but they were deemed nonessential. You know, restaurants, some of my favorite restaurants in Lake County are gone forever, right? And many others are in financial distress, and we're still going to see as loans come due and other things happen. We haven't seen the final result of that. And so my, my, and I gave this very serious thought before voting to override the veto, but I really felt that, that the governor had, had exercised too much exclusive power on this, and that the legislature has a constitutional role to play in, in looking at these things because they're, they've now lasted over a year and had tremendous impact on our economy, on families, and in businesses specifically. So I wanted to explain that to you. I don't necessarily disagree with all of the decisions the governor made, and I certainly would not want to be in his position, having to make some of these decisions. They were very difficult, and there was no history to draw upon, but we felt that the legislature should be a part of this process in the future, and we were happy to be able to override that veto in both the House and in the Senate. And that's kind of my quick report. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Mr. President?
Counsel?
Mr. Donovan?
Congratulations, Mr. Senator.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask one question. Where does the $60 million put into the account by First Energy stand? Is there any chance of getting that back to the people or putting it back into the, into their payments and all? Is that locked up for now?
So you're referring to the, the dark money that was, that was put, and, you know, the, the U.S. Attorney is, even though it's going to be a different U.S. Attorney now because he's, he's left office, is, is working through that. I have no idea where the money is, and if it could, you know, where it could go if they could find it.
Okay.
Because it went from First Energy directly or through their pack, I would assume. So I honestly don't know, but I suspect we'll hear more about that in the coming months.
All right, thank you. And then one more thing, the rainy day fund, how much is in the rainy day fund now, and is that being utilized for anything?
It's about $2 billion right now, and that's, in my view, where it ought to be because, you know, you can go through that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Under the right conditions. And so there are no plans that I'm aware of that the administration has, the Senate doesn't, of ways and means to liquidate that. We're going through the budget process right now, will be finished at the end of June, and there, I have not seen any proposals put forward to dip into the rainy day fund to do, for the operating budget.
That's all I got, thank you.
This time. Anything else? Great, well, thank you very much, and again, it's great to be back in Mentor here. Thank you.
Well, State Senator Sorino, we appreciate that. I think this is an effective way for you to come and present information to us as a city and get to hear firsthand what you're doing down there and the things that are important to you. So we thank you for that.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I did forget to mention one thing, and Ken should throw something at me for forgetting this, but, you know, the, the question has come up, and I was on a Zoom call with mayors and managers that Ken unfortunately couldn't make it, but the subject was on the, the income tax issues, municipal income tax issues, and I can just tell you what I told, I think we had maybe 40 or 50 people on that call, that I don't see any momentum in the Senate anyway for any permanent changes at all. And I personally believe that, you know, we don't know what the workforce is going to look like, you know, post-COVID, and, you know, how many people are going to go back to their companies or how many are going to stay working at home. It's, it's a real guess at this point, and so I am, I am not in favor of making any, any changes that would, that would pick some winners and losers, which there surely would be, without really knowing in the long run, you know, what the workforce situation is going to look like. So I apologize, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's more good news, and we appreciate that, especially in the monetary area. I think at this time, I'm going to turn it over to city manager and request your assistance in the presentation of an award.
I'm going to step up there if I can, Mr. President.
So counsel, it's my, it's my privilege really tonight to just use this platform to bring to your attention some very special employees that we have in the city. Counsel is very much aware of the fact that, you know, fighting the pandemic for the last year has been a large effort. It's been a cooperative effort that's taken into consideration, the resources at the local level, at the state level, the federal level certainly. And this cooperation has never been more apparent in some of the work that some of our employees have done, that, I know counsel is aware of this, but we wanted to publicly acknowledge. So about less than a year or so ago, the State Department, the Ohio Department of Public Safety's EMS Division asked the city of Mentor to, because they were aware of some of our capabilities with respect to our effectiveness at providing public messaging, to produce a couple of public service announcements on behalf of the state of Ohio. They recognized that they didn't really have the capacity to do so, and they also recognized the good work that we have done in that area for many years to come. So as a result of, of that request, our, our, both our fire department and our public information department collectively produced two PSAs for the state of Ohio as part of a series called Be a Part of the Solution. And the first one of those encouraged the public to ease the strain on first responders by recognizing when to and when not to call on EMS providers and with respect to 911. And then the second PSA encouraged first responders to get the COVID vaccine. And, you know, what we, we were glad to take part in that effort, but it, it actually grew into something much larger. Not only was that used by the state of Ohio, but it was used throughout the entire country by different states and different cities and, and other entities on a wide basis because of the quality of that, and, and because the state felt comfortable sharing that because of the quality. So they recognized several of our employees, and I'm going to ask them to come up here momentarily. I'll ask them to do that right now. Ante LaGarcic, Jonathan Edwards, Andy Speesman, and our fire chief, Bob Searls, if you gentlemen wouldn't mind coming up here. So the director of the Ohio Emergency Management System came to our city and visited us to award the Melvin R. House Penance of Gratitude Award, and I'm going to read to you a little bit about what that award entails. The, this honors bestowed upon a person or organization whose generous actions performed without request or expectation of reimbursement provided extraordinary support to the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Division of EMS. Throughout his career as a public servant, Mel House embraced the importance of establishing vibrant relationships and was especially appreciative of those rare humble individuals who tirelessly work behind the scenes in order to guarantee successful completion of the mission. And the award criteria are: the recipient is a person or organization and is not required to be a current or past EMS or fire provider, practitioner, or agency. The award can be granted to multiple individuals or organizations in any given year, and the award is highly selective and is not required to be granted annually. So each of them will receive this, but I have one here, as I'm symbolically going to hand off to you gentlemen, if you could hold on to that. And we just want to acknowledge the great work that you do for us every single day and what you've done to make the COVID effort a little bit easier and better able to communicate that message statewide. So, thank you, gentlemen. And Senator Sorino, on his own, had actually sent a resolution on behalf of the, the Ohio Senate, and coincidentally, he's here with us tonight, so I think he has very graciously agreed to read it directly.
I actually will spare you and not read the entire thing, but this is a commendation from the Ohio Senate, gentlemen, sent, signed by myself and Senator Matt Huffman, who is president of the Ohio Senate. And he takes first responders very, very seriously, as, as do I, since I, particularly since I have a son who is one in Eastlake. But this, this recognition is, is an important attainment for you that you should all be proud of, and I am happy to, representing the Senate of Ohio, all 33 senators, recognize this and want to congratulate you for your dedication to our community and for the recognition that you are receiving here tonight. So I'll leave this commendation with you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Senator.
It is a pleasure to see people you know receive awards, so congratulations.
I bet you wore a suit again, too.
Public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-021.
An ordinance authorizing revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flippiak, excuse me. Members of council, this ordinance affects three non-general fund accounts, as noted in the staff memo. Firstly, the local coronavirus fund for residual amount of interest that was earned, we can spend $10 more. Secondly, the Tyler resurfacing fund, a change order in the amount of $12,000 is being appropriated. And finally, a return of an advance on a federal grant for $14,000. I would recommend approval of the entire ordinance. Thank you.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-021 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-022.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with American Fireworks Company to provide fireworks displays on or about July 4, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me start off by saying we fully intend to have a fireworks display this year.
All right.
And unless we get curtailed in some other manner. The council, the city did receive one proposal for a fireworks display this year for its Fourth of July annual display. This council is aware, we typically appropriate $25,000 for this purpose, and we ask the bidders to provide the number and size of shells which they will give us for, for that amount. This year, American Fireworks gave us a very attractive proposal. Mr. Kaminsky tells me that compared to our last display in 2019, this exceeds it slightly, which we thought was pretty good. So we would ask council to approve.
Move to suspend. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-022 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-023.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Davi Tree Resource Group for the restoration and stabilization of 650 feet reach of the Marsh Creek running through Springbrook Park and restoration of 1.5 acres of riparian habitat and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, four bid proposals were received for the Springbrook Garden Park Wetland Restoration Project Phase 2. This grant was, this is fully funded by a grant through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's 319H Nonpoint Source Program Grant. The total project cost is estimated at $243,827. Counsel is, when you remember that the first phase of this was also funded by a grant in the amount of just over $264,000, and that first phase provided 2.75 acres of a wetland restoration and a good portion of the stream restoration. The second phase will restore an additional 600 feet of the stream and about 650 feet of floodplain. We are recommending Davi Tree Service for this project. They were one of four bids, Davi Resource Group, excuse me, they were one of four bids received, and together with our engineering department, our recreation department, as well as our partners, Chagrin River and the Lake County Soil and Water District, all felt that this was the lowest and best proposal.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
If I could just add a comment and a question. In my opinion, this is really turning out nice. Very nice. I'm very pleased with how this is growing, and question, is this the final phase of the restoration, or is there one more phase to come after this? Because this is Phase 2, correct?
Yeah, this is Phase 2. This is the, this is the final phase of the stream restoration. There may be some wetland enhancements down the road in a, in a further phase, but we'll wait and see how this turns out, and we've been very fortunate with obviously bringing outside resources to this. Counsel is aware that we received a half a million dollars in the state capital budget recently to begin to move forward, which we're coming very close to bidding out the project for the all-purpose facility there. So Springbrook Park is really coming together very nicely.
Very nicely, and, and this exceeds my expectations. And I can imagine when it all grows in, how beautiful that, that portion is going to be.
Absolutely.
In the entirety of the, of park, so thank, very thankful for this.
You know, I was able, it was, you know, it was really my pleasure to be able to talk about how well some of our staff members worked cooperatively on some of this stuff, but when you look at this, there are so many city departments and outside agencies and But when you look at this, there are so many city departments and outside agencies involved in this restoration. And much like what we did with the two-town stream restoration project in, in President Landik's ward, these projects are really exceeding our own expectations and are going to really be amazing assets for the community for generations.
It's unique. It's just completely unique. Thank you. Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-023 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-024.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Excel Corporation for the purchase of pavement marking paint.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Schweiger, please.
Bids were open on March 24th for the paint that will be used this summer in the city's pavement marking process. A Federal General Services Administration specification was used, and we requested pricing in several quantity configurations. Two bids were received in response to our request. The low bid was received from the Excel Corporation with the pricing shown in the attached bid summary. Based on our estimated quantities, it is anticipated that we will spend approximately $65,000 to $75,000 in paint in 2021. Thank you.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Yes, and I just wanted to say it's really nice to see a local company be able to provide
the service for us. So, yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-024 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-025.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Classic Ford for the purchase of five 2021 Ford utility police interceptor vehicles and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, this is a budget item. Chief Gunch?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac, and members of council. This is for the purchase of five 2021 Ford police interceptors. It's a continuation of our annual vehicle replacement program. Bids were received from Classic Ford and another dealership, and Classic Ford beat the state bid price. State bid price was $37,612.50, and they will charge $37,500. And I do recommend approval for this ordinance.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-0-025 has been approved. Second reading, there are none.
Third reading, there are none. Managers report. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, council, we have two open pavement cut requests for your consideration. The first is at 7418 Lakeshore Boulevard, which is a request from Milk Pablison Custom Homes for a new six-inch sanitary sewer connection. Ask for your approval.
Question for administration. Just, how long is this project going to take? Do we have any idea?
The, the connection itself?
Yeah.
I, I really can't answer that, councilman, but usually these are done within a couple of days.
Because I know that's a very busy street.
In a day, usually, unless there's some type of problem. It's an eight-by-eight cut, so it's not a large section. And Mr. Donovan might be able to answer that question pretty effectively.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Pavement open cut for 7418 Lakeshore Boulevard has been approved.
Thank you, council. And the second is a open pavement cut request for the Brookview Reserve Subdivision Phase One sanitary sewer improvement. This will take place at the intersection of Johnny Cake Ridge Road and Brentwood Road. This is part of that Phase One subdivision, and it's a six-and-a-half by nine-and-a-half open cut to replace an eight-inch sanitary with a new 12-inch sanitary sewer. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Pavement open cut for, I'm sorry, the address is...
Brookview Reserve.
Brookview Reserve has been approved. Clerk's correspondence.
A few more things, Mr. President.
Excuse me. You have more words, good words.
Just a few things to remind our public of. So, council, we remind our residents that anyone now over the age of 16 is eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. Residents who wish to receive a vaccine are encouraged to visit www.lcghd.org, that is our local health district, for information and to schedule an appointment, or download the ArmorVax app on their phone and schedule an appointment through that. And Chief, do you mind saying a couple of words about our new Megapod sites and how effective those have been?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. At the city manager's direction, several of the city departments have been involved with supporting Points of Distribution Center vaccine clinics for the distribution of the COVID vaccine. They've been very successful. They've been well-supported by the city and some of our neighboring communities. We hosted a pod on March 31st. It was the county's first Megapod. It was held at the high school. That day, we vaccinated 400, or 4,878 residents. We'll be involved in another Megapod tomorrow at Lakeland Community College, and we'll be holding another pod, Points of Distribution Center, at the Mentor Maintenance Facility on Friday. And personally, I'd like to thank council for all their support. It's our first time back in session. The 14, the past 14 months have been challenging. But I thank you for your support and leadership to get the Public Safety Services what we need, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
I think it's worth mentioning to council that, you know, the Megapods that the city, not the city, but the county, the collective efforts of the jurisdictions in Lake County, including our own, are actually equal or larger in size than some of the quote-unquote Megapods that you've been reading about on the, on the national news that are being sponsored by the federal government with help from the National Guard in that. There's one downtown Cleveland recently, and ours have met or exceeded their distribution there. So, again, these efforts, when collective, are pretty powerful in our county. We have a lot of great, great people to thank for that. The deadline for filing Mentor Municipal Tax forms or exemption forms has been extended to Monday, May 17th, 2021. At this time, the Rita office at the Mentor Municipal Center remains closed at their choosing. You can visit the Rita website at www.ritaohio.com to file your taxes, make a payment, check your refund status, view your payment history, or send Rita a secure email. Taxpayers with questions can also call their 800 number at 1-800-860-7482. City of Mentor is pleased to announce the 2021 schedule for the Mentor Rocks Summer Concert Series presented by Lake Health. Schedule and detailed information can be found at The Hometown Heroes Banner Program is sold out for 2021. That's every year since we started that program and has sold out. The banners will be placed just prior to Memorial Day and will be on display through Veterans Day. Thanks to everyone for their continued support of this program that honors Mentor's veterans. Mentor has been named Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for the 33rd consecutive year, and we're proud of that because Mentor continues to demonstrate its commitment to effective urban forest management and doing its part to help address these challenges for Mentor residents now and in the future. This week begins the city's annual yard waste collection, which extends through the second full week of December. From now through late October, residents can dispose of 12 units of yard waste per week, and from late October through mid-December, this amount will increase to 25 units per week. City met with its contractor last week to discuss the president's park pathway project in a detailed pre-construction meeting. The contractor expects to begin clearing for the, for the proposed path in the beginning of May. And a completion date for that project is June 25th, and each of the affected residents there will receive a letter on instructing them on what to expect out there. And, Mr. Landik, I know you were concerned about some of the constituents who reached out to you, and I know the engineering department is working with a couple out there to provide some visual barriers and that, and plantings as we move forward with that project.
Thank you.
Our road repair program marking of pavement limits for the asphalt streets is complete, and grinding of pavement for our asphalt streets as part of the city's annual road maintenance program is scheduled to begin April 12th on Monday. Marking has also begun for the concrete streets in that program, and lake overlook drive reconstruction work is anticipated to begin the week of April 12th. And letters were mailed Friday, April 2nd, to inform residents of an online public informational meeting to be held on Wednesday, April 7th at 6:30 PM. And the meeting will provide residents a brief presentation of the project and give them a chance to ask any project-related questions. And our experience with that has been very positive in the past phases. Then finally, council, we have a couple of new businesses that we want to recognize to, in our community. Leolo Hospitality Chef Prepared Meals and Catering Services at 8488 Mentor Avenue, and AJ Nails and Spa at 9518 Diamond Center Drive. So we thank them for their investment, and we wish them great success in their future here in our community. That's all.
I just have one follow-up comment. I was at one of the Public Works, Axine Drives, and my wife as well, and there was Chief Searls very visible out front, talking to people as they came through, and the whole operation was just so efficient. It was, it was really a pleasure, the way it was organized and the way they were processing and moving people through. It truly was a mass vaccination. So, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Philippiac, are we opening all the pools this year? Do you know anything about that yet, or you weren't scheduled to do that? Yeah, so the best answer I can give you at this point is that it's likely that we will open. Are, we're planning on opening two pools this year. We're planning on Morton and Civic Center. So, okay, so we're not committed to all the pools? Well, we're not committed to Garfield because even, we're, we're not sure what restrictions will be in place. Obviously, last year, we decided to open Civic Center to only Mentor residents. Even with the very complex set of rules that we had in place and precautions, we had a very, very light year. So we expect, obviously, that that's going to pick up this year. Garfield Pool has not really been very well attended in years past, and anticipating that some people will still be, likely be somewhat reluctant to return to public gatherings of that type, we, we wanted to make sure that we expanded our opportunity for Mentor residents. And Morton and Civic Center are clearly our, our most populated pools. So that's our intent right now. Garfield's in my ward now. I'm just getting questions on it, and I just needed some sort of answer. Thanks.
Clerk's correspondence. Julie?
Council's in receipt of Mentor Municipal Court Annual 2020 Report and the month-end report of February 2021. Council's also in receipt of a liquor permit transfer for DK Pubs, Inc., DBA Mean Mugs Pub, from 9055 Mentor Avenue to 7061 Chillicothe Road. Council is also in receipt of a new liquor permit for Trader Joe's East, Inc., DBA Trader Jones, 709, at 9474 Mentor Avenue. That is all.
Commission Committee reports. Meeting minutes: Community Arts Commission, January 7th, 2021, and February 4th, 2021. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, February 9th, 2021. Tree Commission, February 10th, 2021. Municipal Planning Commission, February 11th, 2021, and March 4th, 2021. Old business. Council, we have an appointment to the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals this evening for an unexpired term ending 12/31/2021. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Joe Premiano.
Thank you, Mr. Marn.
I'll second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes. Are there any other nominations?
Joseph Premiano has been appointed to the Board of Zoning, Building and Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending 12/31/2021. Any other old business, council? Then new business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Dowling.
Probably should have asked the manager during his report. Do we have any updates on the senior center? I've been contacted by a lot of people. They're looking forward to coming back and exercising and...
Sure. No, it's a, it's a great question and one that we've spent a lot of time talking about. So our request, we placed a request along with all of the other communities who host senior centers in Lake County, with the General Health District to provide us with a set of guidelines and expectations that they would require in order for us to reopen. So we don't have that yet, but we just had a discussion on it just this morning, actually, and that's being processed right now. They're obviously working closely with restrictions at the state level, and as council is probably aware, a lot of those orders were rescinded yesterday and replaced with some general guidelines. But there are still a number of questions that, that remain in terms of testing of those who would attend. We assume at this point that nearly everyone who is eligible to be at our senior center has also had the opportunity to become vaccinated, so that's a good thing. So we're hopeful that those guidelines will come out soon. We've sent a tentative target date, and this is just a target for June 1st. And we, I think the collective thinking among all Lake County communities right now is that we would like to move forward together so that one senior center facility isn't overwhelmed if they're the only one open, and that we're all moving forward with the same guidelines so that all seniors, regardless of where they go, can feel comfortable that safety precautions are in place.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
We've talked about the pools. We've talked about the senior center. But our City Fest is traditionally like four months from now. Any thoughts on whether we're going to be able to do that this year? I, I noticed that we didn't include any fireworks for the event.
It's a good observation, councilman. We do plan on moving forward with City Fest, and, and again, it would simply be subject to any restrictions that may be in place at that time that would make it unfeasible. But right now, we're planning on moving forward. We haven't really had much, much interest in the fireworks, quite frankly. So that was, that was a, a change that we had decided for really just budgetary reasons. We were do, we did it last year, even though City Fest was canceled last year. The fireworks were, were removed from that because by the time the end of the night came, pretty much everybody was gone, and we didn't really, no pun intended, we weren't getting the bang for our buck. But if that's something that, that council would like to see reinstated, we certainly would entertain that. But that, that's really an unrelated reason. We do want to move forward with that and Beach Fest if we can.
And that would include the parade that we traditionally have, you think?
Well, we're certainly willing to host the parade. As you know, we don't directly organize that. There's a committee for that, but we would certainly want, like to see it.
The City Fest parade, yeah.
Yes.
I'd love to see that event get back to normal, if I could.
I think we all would.
Yeah, thanks.
President? May I ask that we go into executive session for an update on the pending litigation?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.